Let me open a regular meeting, the City Council of City of Pearland for Monday, June 22, 2020. And this meeting tonight is via telephone and video conferencing. And we welcome everyone in attendance at this point. Moving into our agenda to order, order, which I have just completed. And our last council member Moore, if he would please share with us a fine invocation for tonight. And that council member Carbone lead us in a pledge of allegiance to our flags, United States of Texas.
If you speak, I will pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you to watch over each and every one of us as we do work that would be pleasing to you. And we ask that you watch over our community and communities around the world that are going through a very difficult time and some unrest, and that you would bring us all together. At the end of the day, God, we're all your children. And we ask that you watch over each and every one. And allow us to just get along better in this world and do things that are pleasing to you. We ask that you watch over the men and women in our military. We ask that you watch over our first responders. And specifically, take an extra hand in watching over our first responders in this pandemic as it still goes on. And try to keep everybody safe. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Senator Barbara Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor, for joining me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the great state of Texas, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Member Councilman Moore, for your fine invocation. And Councilmember Carbone for the great pledge to state and national flag. Moving into our agenda to roll call. And which would be a certification for our quorum tonight. Councilmember Pro Tim Little, would you respond with your name? All right.
President.
Councilmember Alondo?
Here, Mayor.
Councilmember Carbone?
I'm here, Mayor.
Councilmember Moore?
Here, Mayor.
Councilmember Hernandez?
He's going to be late, Mayor.
And Councilmember Perez? You're unmuted, you're muted. Councilmember Perez? I see him visibly there, he's superbly...
Mayor, I'm here.
Okay. Good. And then Councilmember Owens?
I'm here, Mayor.
Okay, Madam Secretary, I certify a quorum for the meeting tonight. With Hernandez planning to join us later. Moving into our agenda to citizen comments, which is item four on our agenda. Let's have our mayor pro temp, Councilmember Little, to...
Thank you, Mayor. We had a lot of people sign up to speak tonight. One person will be given five minutes because she's been designated, officially designated by a group. The rest of you will speak three minutes. Being on a Facebook page or writing a blog or an article doesn't make you a designated speaker of a group. If you want to speak on behalf of a group, you need to get some sort of designation from that group. This rule was originally designed when a lot of people show up at a meeting wishing to speak on the same topic, to designate one person to speak on their behalf to eliminate the redundancy. So when you begin speaking, say your name and address. And you should have a timer on your screen. If not, I'll remind you when you have 30 seconds left if you don't have a call. I'm going to call you in the order I received your names. And the first person is... Also, one more thing, if you sign up to speak for more than one agenda item, you'll still be limited to one three-minute speech. So the first person is Maria DeCicchio?
Yes, sir. Hi, Councilwoman Little, before I get started, thank you for calling me out just now. We had that discussion earlier about Facebook page. But also, I want to let you know that there was another citizen that did not get their mic tested that had signed up to speak. And I'll send you his name in a little bit. But also, before I finish, I just want to let you know that if I have any time left over, I'd like to yield it to Jimmy Little, or Jimmy Davis. And with that, I'll start, and I appreciate y'all's time. With COVID-19...
Go ahead and say your question.
Oh, yes, sir. Maria DeChico, 3202, Wall Turkey Lane, Pearland, Texas, 77581. With COVID-19 creating such an uncertainty for the entire area and our nation, and not to mention we're in hurricane season, appraisal and tax rates are still concerns. We would certainly hope that council would recognize the residents, that we could use a break financially. That includes the return of the $1.6 million windfall the city received from property tax payments. We expect council to lower not only the tax rate, but the tax burden on our residents during this upcoming next budget season. In regards to water billings, how is it the city has increased the rates twice, adopted the 3230 plan, and there's still more than $3 million decrease in revenues? What are the assumptions that are being made to tune the $2.7 million in decreased revenues? Council has done everything that staff has asked them to do on the water billing side. How is this possible? But more importantly, revenues, even though they are down, they still exceed expenses. There's no need to raise rates or do anything to make up for the alleged decreased revenues. Government is not supposed to be a profit center. And the last thing I want to ask is, $490,000 for Crown Victorians? Even I, a resident, did my research on that. Top of the line at $73,000. $81,000 per car is ridiculous. And I'd like to know who's using these cars that y'all are proposing to purchase with my tax dollars. I appreciate y'all's time for that. I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Jimmy Davis when his time comes. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kevin Cole. Mr. Cole, are you there?
I'm here.
The next speaker is... Begin speaking.
All right, good deal. My name is Kevin Cole. Address is 3808 Houston Lake Drive here in Pearland, Texas, 77581. And before I start, I would like to wish a belated Happy Father's Day to all you dads, not only on council and staff, but also listening in and everything that you do for your families. I appreciate it. Honorable mayor and council members, I'm here tonight to speak to new business item number 12, the budget amendment. As a former council member, I understand the need to amend the budget from time to time, but also understand allowing the public, as well as each council member, to fully understand the requests being made by staff. So I have a couple of comments about tonight's agenda item. First, if I were mayor, I would be requesting council to hear the staff presentation and enter into the discussion, but I would want the council to postpone the actual vote tonight. Exhibit A was not included in the backup documents for the council or the public to review above the 72-hour mark. Yes, the agenda item was posted, but this critical piece of information was not. Council did not get it until approximately 1:00 p.m. today or some five and a half hours ago. That left no time to digest it in order to be fully informed of the decision you're making, let alone being fully transparent with the public while making this decision. Next comment is, the staff write-up says property tax receipts were approximately $1.6 million higher than projected. I don't see anywhere in the document that gives that $1.6 million back to the taxpayer. This overpayment is in the range of approximately two cents on the tax rate. So in September 2019, the council passed a $0.32 tax rate increase and could have gotten by with the effective rate instead. So strong consideration as we move forward in the budget process should be given to giving this $1.6 million back to the taxpayer. And I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman Little, you were muted.
Okay, the next speaker is Felicia Harris Haas. Ms. Haas, you have five minutes to speak. Say your name and address and begin speaking.
Hello?
You're on this off.
Okay, well, before again, council, I do not have... The link that was provided to me for WebEx has not been working. So I do not have the ability to follow any time clock. It's FYI.
Okay, well, I'll let you know when you have. One minute remaining and then 30 seconds.
All right, thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Little. Council Mayor, full chair Harris Haas, 312, Denver, Texas, 77584. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of a group of more than 4,200 residents in the majority of counties, many of whom reside in Pearland and the surrounding area. The group is called BC Tax Resistance. And I have comments this evening in regards to budget item, sorry, new business item number 12, dealing with the budget. What we have in this situation, council, is what appears to be a last-minute amendment to the agenda for this evening, at least the appearance, of course, I don't know. But the addition is in a different form, it must have been an afterthought. This memo that is presented suggests that the reason for the discussion this evening is to try to decide what to do with this $1.6 million additional funds from property taxes that have been paid in by citizens of Pearland. The ordinance that relates to this provision for council consideration seeks to give the city manager basically a further discussion to do with these amendments as he wishes. I understand it was an exhibit that was not included in the packet. I have since been provided the exhibit late this afternoon and have not had a chance to study it fully. But I want to ask the council to consider a number of items on the agenda. So please consider these during the discussions, but I might hear how council deals with them. First of all, looking at Exhibit A and the memorandum, I understand staff presented and council passed a budget in September of 2019. In Exhibit A, you see that budget basically reflected in the first columns under revenues and expenses. Then you see an amended budget was passed two months later in December of 2019, if I'm reading the memo correctly. And then you see in the revenues column, a large number of those that were included in the September budget gone. You then see in the expenses side, many of those remain in that particular time period under ordinance number 1568-1. Now, in June, you see all of a sudden a whole host of revenue numbers added back into the budget without any explanation as to how or where those revenues came from. It's unclear to us as residents where this money is coming from and how it is being used. One thing that I would point out is, in the memo, it suggests that there is, in the general fund balance, an excess of $4.8 million in addition or as part of, I'm not real clear, this $1.6 million that the council now has. With COVID-19 and all that's going on in our economy, I second the points made by Mr. Cicchio and by Mr. Cole concerning some appropriate usage of that $1.6 million coming back to the taxpayers, coming back to the citizens. It is in fact our money. With respect to the expenditure of those funds, it may be that if citizens knew better how the staff proposed to use those dollars, we might agree. But as it stands right now, there are so many questions in play that it's not possible for us, without a workshop or further consideration and information, to agree. And I know council has, in many regards, disregarded the comments of the public like it did in the water billing situation a few weeks ago. There was not a single public comment in favor of council's measures. And I understand that council has a history of disregarding public comments. But on this issue, I think it is exceptionally important that council not disregard public comments. This is our money. You are fiduciaries of our money. And while it may seem that appropriate in normal circumstances to give the city manager this kind of discretion, we are not living in normal times. We're living in COVID times. We're living in depressed energy times. We're living in times when people literally don't know whether there's going to be a recession, how long it's going to last, and what their future holds. And I think it would be...
One minute remaining.
...disregard the citizens' comments. We're talking about $645 million being spent, and a large part of it in Exhibit A, to be spent in the next three months as you go into quarter four for the fiscal year. And on water billing, council, just thinking what DeCicchio said, how on earth do we know, can we trust what we're being told? Staff says that revenues are exceeding expected every month, yet there's a proposal to have several million collected. So I would ask council not to defer to staff on that, but to begin to get to the bottom of it and listen to the residents' time.
All right, thank you very much. The next person up is Jimmy Davis. Mr. Davis, you have four minutes because Ms. DeCicchio yielded one minute to you. Say your name and address and begin speaking.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Compton Street, Pearland, Texas. I wanted to pick on two items, item number three and item number 12. Item number three, the sidewalk issue. Yeah, I'm glad to think that we're going to pay another company $450,000 to repair sidewalks. I wish we could fund our own city employees with that kind of money to fix sidewalks. Part of the problem, though, when I actually looked at it, and I looked on their page, two of their six-page write-up, and says, "Staff and district contractor will continue to address the water backlog of removal of placed sidewalk and wheelchair ramp service requests." And they go on to list out a head map of outstanding service requests which are addressed as funding allows, the following include, but not limited to... And they list Bailey between Veterans and Bailey Bridge. Now, this stood out to me because I'm a runner. I run that bridge a lot. We meet up near there. I run past down Bailey on that one sidewalk, down past Veterans, back and forth over the bridge. That's some of the best sidewalks the city has. I drove by today because I'm like, maybe in the last few weeks, few months, something's changed. Because I ran it in a few months. I'm not training for a marathon at the moment. The sidewalk's in exceptional, exceptional condition. So I'm trying to figure out why we have on the list removal replaced sidewalks that most people would dream of having. I really don't understand it. So then I look at the others and I think, okay, how many, how much more on this list did they give you of all these locations that we need to fix? And that's why we need to pay this company this money? Well, how much more of these are really necessary? Because it's just a matter of, you know, we're taking care of the company that's buddies with us and we want to keep them around. I think we need to look at all these and reassess exactly how much money we're spending without side end to these, considering we bought you equipment for light and concrete and stuff. So let's look at what we can do within our city budget as it is. Maybe next year, on the next budget, let's just actually fund it. That was somehow it's going to ask for in February. But y'all wouldn't let us speak in the public meetings where we're supposed to give input where our tax dollars are scanned. Yeah, that's the meeting y'all wouldn't let the public have any say. Good job. On item number 12, you know, people have gotten into some exquisite detail over these issues. But one thing jumped out at me, 3230. It's supposed to catch us up additional revenue. But yet the city says that we have lost $677,815 because of implementation of the 32W plan. How do we implement a plan that's supposed to capture additional revenue and somehow we have lost $677,000 because? It makes absolutely no sense. As has been pointed out, the Exhibit A wasn't there earlier today. I'm glad somebody mentioned it because I was reviewing this earlier today and didn't see it. And considering everything wasn't available for public and council to review, I think this needs to be postponed. Thank you.
You're still muted, Councilmember Little. The next speaker is Vernice Sorell. Say your name and address and begin speaking. Ms. Sorell, are you there?
Hang on just one second, Councilmember. Okay, try it now, please. Hello? Hello?
Hello.
Hi, how are you all?
Good, appreciate it.
I'm doing great. I would like to start off by commending you all for your professionalism in handling the processional for Brother George Floyd. I think you guys did a phenomenal job with that. And also, Happy Father's Day to all of you fathers out there. I wanted to...
Go ahead, go ahead and say your name and address, please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Vernice Sorell, Jr., 116 Willow Cross Spring Drive, Pearland, Texas, 77584. I went to... This has been burdening me. I am a resident here. I didn't grow up here, but my sons grew up here. And I approached you all a couple of years back in regards to race relations in Pearland and how we can get in front of this. And I noticed that you guys have a foundational element on policing in Pearland that was released as of June 16, 2020. In there, I was just looking at it, and I think that in training, the training should be expanded to include understanding culture, some training in community policing, as well as training in building relationships. And then I also look at it, and I was trying to find what is use of force. And I see that in this thing, in this memo or this bulletin that you guys put out, it dated as of the 16th of this year. However, the use of force policy dates back to November 16, 2016, which I think is a long time without being updated. In there, it addresses the use of force of using firearms, phasers, and the baton. However, it does not address the use of chokeholds or any type of maneuvers that could cut off breathing. So I think that that needs to be addressed as well, so the community will know what policies are. I do propose a community review board because we see that police departments have let down our communities, especially our black residents. But when you look at a person like George Floyd, you don't see, you shouldn't see black, you should see human being. And I believe those who are sworn to serve and protect, they're authorized to uphold the law. And when they're allowed to break the law, it empowers them to become the law. And when they become the law, justice is eliminated. And without justice, liberty cannot stand. And as a black man in this community, I do feel like we need to do something to prohibit something that we've seen, which is another pandemic across this nation. I think we need to update these policies and allow citizens to have a part in reviewing to hold officers accountable so that they will not become the law. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Thomas Long. Say your name and address and he may begin speaking. Mr. Long, are you there?
Councilmember Little, it doesn't look like he's in the meeting.
Okay, we'll come back to him if he logs in. Next up, Jeff Huntke. You have three minutes. State your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Jeff Huntke, thirty-nine twelve Oakwood Drive North, Pearland, Texas, seven seven five eight one. I'd like to address new business item number three in regards to holding green skates, six, four hundred and fifty thousand per street sidewalk maintenance. I believe this piggybacks off what Jimmy was talking about. In the details, it states that they're supposed to be authorized by the street and drinking division of the work. But my question is, who authorizes their decision? The reason I ask this is more of a personal question, because the sidewalk in front of our health house took due to two sections of concrete being two inches higher. Walking throughout our subdivision, I noticed similar cases. At the beginning of this year, they addressed our subdivision using a mud backing process. I spoke with the neighbors, and we were all very happy with our new level sidewalks. Then, about a month or so later, they came through and started removing the concrete tap they just repaired. When I questioned city staff, I was told it was due to a water break. Now, there was never any standing water during this period, and they replaced many sidewalks in our subdivision, which mean to say that the entire subdivision had a water leak, which wasn't true. So I see this entire effort as a complete waste of money that couldn't be used for other items. This is the exact type of budgetary oversight. We need to make sure these funds we have are being used correctly. That leads me to my next point regarding new business item number twelve, the budget ordinance. When I reviewed my student's budget, I saw excess spending of over a half a million dollars spent on conferences and seminars, over a hundred thousand dollars spent on apparel, and I brought this excess spending up. I was about to ask the members, well, you should have raised these questions at the beginning of the budgetary process in February and not upon reading, okay? So I followed your rules, and I showed up for this year's Saturday budget meeting, and I was told, as Jimmy alluded to, we were not allowing any citizen comment. I wasn't given access to the budget documentation prior to the meeting to review, and was denied my right to complain about the previous year's access. It seems as though I tried to play by the rules, but the rules keep changing. This coupled with the water bill issue is the main reason residents question the true transparency of the fall. Finally, there's been a lot of talk on social media about canceling the fireworks celebration. There was information saying that it was due to COVID- nineteen, but upper gatherings seemed to have continued, and people would find a way to distance themselves. In these trying times, many residents and residents are looking forward to coming together in the community and for a few hours, put away our differences and enjoy celebrating our country as Americans. Not being able to coordinate this event has given the city of Pearland yet another mark against it, and making residents question many of the decisions being made at these meetings. But I'm pleased with your time and your attention.
Thanks, sir. Next up is Richard Sharp. Mr. Sharp, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
He is not in the meeting either.
All right, we'll skip over to the final speaker then, and Ryan Taffey. I apologize for mispronouncing his name. State your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Ryan Taff, twenty-four twenty-eight Swift Boulevard, Houston, Texas. But I was actually just, if I apologize, I signed up just to speak on behalf of the agenda of the plea number one in case there are any questions. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is Richard Sharp on the line?
No, it doesn't appear so.
Okay, Mayor, that completes our public comment.
Okay. I thank you very much, and I appreciate the comments from our citizens. Moving in our agenda to item number five, which is public hearings. They are not on the agenda tonight. Moving to item number six, which is consent agenda. I'd like to, Mayor, propose to tell me the ones that have been removed, which are items A, B, C, and D.
Mayor, before we do that, I, me and one of the council members would like to request to see if item twelve can be moved from the bottom of the agenda and precede the consent agenda.
Okay. I'll second that request. Okay.
I'd like to go further and say that we postpone until after our Saturday budget meeting.
Okay. Okay.
I agree on the postponement for item number twelve.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. I think what we need to do, Mayor, is that we'll need to get that, move that item out of order and take that first. We will, we will actually need to have a formal motion for that.
My decision to us to move item number twelve next would be in front of the consent agenda.
I made that motion, and Member Little has seconded it.
As we have motion and second, approved. Perez, can you lead this off?
Sure.
Item twelve. And I'll ask our manager, Chris, to check in as needed.
So just on clear, Mayor, the, so the items been introduced, and do you want to hear the presentation before you?
It would be nice to hear the presentation, which is what the, what the council member was supposed to do, is to present it as a regular action item. Action item number twelve, you present that action item.
Yes, Mayor, I can do that. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number one, F eight four, dash two, so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments by council at this point?
Mayor, Mayor, this is Woody.
Okay.
I want to request to have that moved. We almost forgot the Exhibit A today at noon, so it wasn't out for the seventy-two hour period before the council meeting. And I don't see an urgency in order to get this out and done at this point in time. But I'd like to see if we can move it to the next council meeting, and it gives some of us, or other council members and everybody, and also any of the residents that are going to review it, an opportunity to take a look at it. At this point in time, I don't think anybody had an opportunity really to go in to review that tax money A that was supposed to be as a part of this, but was moved to the next council meeting.
Woody, are you going to make the motion, or do you want me to?
Yeah, make the motion.
I'm asking that we postpone Agenda item number twelve until the next council meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Until the next regular council meeting, not the JPH, correct?
Correct. The next regular council meeting.
Okay. Senator Long, your second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that we are voting first on moving item number twelve prior to the consent agenda. The motion is second. Is that correct?
No, we're required to move that because it's just the order of the agenda.
Yeah. Crystal, just to clarify, this is Darren. Just traditionally, what has been done is out of order, it's been recommended by a council member or the mayor, and then if there's no objections, then they go ahead and take that from order. And so we're at the point now where we have the motion to postpone to the next regular meeting. And so if you want, you can go ahead and take the vote from the council on that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
And where are we voting on now? This is the postponement or moving the agenda?
The postponement.
Motion.
The postponement?
Yes, I have the postponement.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero to postpone item number twelve for the next regular council meeting.
Okay, let us all return back to the agenda as posted. As the consent agenda, and I'll ask, I remember, Professor Little, if you will tell me which of the A, B, C, and D might be pulled from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, if anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda. Looks like no one wants to pull any items, Mayor.
Remember, Orlando, you're next for the consumer agendas, which is the four items.
Sure, Mayor. Consideration and possible action on the consent agenda, items A through D, so move.
Thank you. Councilman Moore?
Second, we are, and we have, Madam Secretary, I believe we got a motion and a second on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay. With Councilmember Perez on the way. Since we have passed items A, B, C, and D on the consent agenda, let us move to our item number seven on the agenda, to look at your agenda, since manage remove from consent agenda. None. As soon as you will. Moving to new business, items since we have, item number one, the Councilmember Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution R twenty twenty dash one ten, so move.
Second.
Aye.
Chad, report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. So this is a monumental bid award for the city of Pearland project. It's been a decade probably in the making, and that's the extension of McCord Road between McCaw and Cullen. Council has seen this item. These things take years to formulate in terms of the financing and getting it queued up in terms of the regional transportation plan, the land acquisition, the design. We've also awarded in anticipation of this the water and sewer lines separately. So tonight, we're here for the award of the construction itself of the road. And this will provide a great east-west thoroughfare through Pearland between McCaw and Cullen, connecting those end points from Pearland Parkway all the way westerly. So the construction at the Forest Knights have excellent pricing, another great project, pricing moment for us. And again, the bulk of the construction costs are being unwritten by the federal government through the state , thanks to the staff work to get this into the regional transportation plans and so forth. So the award is through James Construction. As a Tech dot primarily funded project, they reviewed this, everything from the beginning, particularly this contract award, and they're in tune with this. And so we're done the background checks and ready to award this to James Construction Knights for just under thirty million dollars. So pleased to bring this to you for consideration.
Okay. Does the council have any question or comments based on the staff report?
Yeah, I do. That's Woody.
I do.
I know somebody's there from James, so I'm not going to ask that, which I normally would. One thing with Tech dot there, James Koch signed off on this thing, and I guess it was a year or so ago, but James hadn't been with Tech dot in two years. He was Gundy, or Gunda. I was with him the day he resigned from the city, retired. But so I guess that if he signed off on it, I guess it's okay. But it, but he's not even with Tech dot during that time.
Councilman Owens, hi, this is Trent, and James Koch actually has returned to Tech dot. He probably, he returned probably within the past year.
If James went back, he just retired.
Yes, sir.
Who is retired? Well, I'm glad, I'm glad he did go back. He's really an excellent person. One thing quite wrong there, Trent, I went through the bid items on some of this stuff, and I was wondering, I didn't know we had that many frontages with residential to replace forty-five mailboxes at the two hundred and eighty-five dollars apiece. I thought this would kind of open all the way through there. I didn't know we had that many mailboxes to replace.
I think you've got a segment east of Cullen that's existing road, and then each of the major cross streets all have fairly significant transitions back to the two-lane asphalt, which we probably pick a few more up in those areas.
Okay. Because I was wondering, because even with the driving driveways there, asphalt driveways, forty-seven thousand square yards of removal for asphalt, there's just, I didn't know we had that many frontages through there for the mailboxes and just for the cost for each one of them. And then I didn't know it was going to have that many driveways through there. So you're talking about when you go across another roadway, making some changes on that existing roadway in both directions, and that's where you pick up the mailboxes and the driveways?
Well, it's twofold. Between Cullen and Stones, what was formerly Brookside Road, there are several businesses and residents along that. And then, yes, for each of the major cross streets, to transition to the full intersection, transition from the two-lane asphalt to a wider intersection at McCord, and then we upsell the intersection, we transition back to the two lanes. And those extend the proper transition lengths several hundred feet north and south of each of those roadblocks.
Okay. All right. Well, you answered my question. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember, do you have a question or comment? Here is none. Madam Secretary, I live with a motion second over the floor.
Sorry, Carol's on mute. I apologize. I had a couple of minor questions real quick. Fred, if you could, just for my education, the fast track pavement, the thirteen inch, where do we anticipate needing that?
I don't know off the top of my head. I would imagine that's probably in some of those intersections where we don't want to shut down the intersections down for a significant period of time. We want to be able to get those back open in traffic.
Okay, no, no big deal. I don't think I require a follow-up on that. On the landscape, are we just doing bare minimum landscape? Is that the, that's similar to what we've done on, what we did on Pearland Parkway, or is it enhanced landscape?
I think it's similar to what you've seen on Bailey and Pearland Parkway and some of the other roadways we've completed recently.
I believe I brought this up in the design, but just to reiterate, if we can just doubly ensure that the landscape plan is using trees and landscape that have, that are meant for our environment, so we don't end up with a similar issue like we did on Pearland Parkway with trees that are slow to grow, and also landscape, the irrigation requirements of the landscape be similar, so we're not, we don't have plants that have different water demand. I know that's been an issue in the past. I'm sure it's addressed in the, in the design. I know, I know we discussed it before, but just wanted to kind of reiterate it.
Yes, sir. We'll ensure that. It does follow all of our criteria and what our right-of-way group and park group looks at for native plants.
Okay. With that, I think it's long overdue, so I'm happy to get it, get it started. Thank you for all the hard work.
And just to tack on to Member Perez's comment, if there's power lines or anything that we're not planting stuff under the power lines, that we have to come back and cut these and avoid wrongs.
Is that a new response?
We'll take a look at that as well. Yes, sir.
I have one other question, Trent, since you're on the line. I've noticed that the the, uh, the EA is not completed yet, it started in twenty sixteen, is that gonna, um, since it's not completed?
I, I didn't understand what, hold on.
Completion date?
I, I didn't understand what you were asking, is not completed?
Well, I've noticed somewhere that the EA is not completed, environmental assessment is not completed, and you talked about going back with, uh, uh, another firm to, to finish up on that, is that going to impact the completion date of this?
The, the environmental assessment is completed, we do have an outstanding, uh, permit with the Corps, uh, we're well along in the process, and where that's located within the project, we, uh, you know, based on our conversations with them, we do have, uh, plenty of time to, to complete that process before the project reaches, uh, those areas.
Okay, and, uh, Berg Oliver is going to do some work for you on that?
Um, I'm not sure who the subconsultant is on that, uh, Berg Oliver's done a lot of, of weapons consulting with us in the past.
Yeah, because Berg Oliver is now OJA, but anyway, I just wanted to find out, because they just said it was, uh, started, uh, in twenty sixteen, it's still ongoing, on the ride of...
Well, the EA is completed, there is still the outstanding permit with the Corps, and I believe it is Berg, Berg Oliver is our consultant, uh, helping us next.
Good, okay, thank you.
Any other question to comment of the council? If not, um, Madam Secretary, I do believe we have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owen.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero to approve resolution R twenty twenty dash one ten.
Then, moving into our agenda, item number two, Councilmember Little, would you present that for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one eleven, so move.
Second, this is Moore.
Motion, second on the floor, we're in discussion, staff report.
Okay, so this is a, uh, a companion to the, uh, construction award, as you would expect, uh, will need, uh, a great deal of effort for that large of a contract for ongoing, uh, construction management services, uh, so for this professional services, we've vetted proposals and, uh, come back with recommendations, uh, toward this HCR, uh, for just under three million dollars, as noted here, uh, and this is for consideration as well. And again, this is all within the, uh, uh, budget, well with, well under the budget, uh, that's been, uh, planned in the CIP.
Okay. Councilmember, any question to comment based on staff report?
Uh, one question, uh, Trent, is, um, material testing is subbed to HCR, or are they independently contracted to us?
Um, HBJ is subbed to HCR, we're under this contract, and HBJ will provide the material testing.
So, uh, HCR will be coordinating all of the material testing, our staff will be directly involved, they'll just be reviewing the reports?
Yes, sir, okay, we'll, we'll have our project manager involved throughout the project, but the, the direct coordination on a daily basis will be, uh, the HCR, construction manager, and, uh, HCR.
Fair enough, and if I could, if I could trouble you and provide, um, a brief explanation as to why we need construction management services on top of having, perhaps, construction managers for a project this size, uh, it's a better understanding to the public as to why we are, uh, adding a three-million-dollar award on top of the construction project?
Sure, so, um, we've received eighty percent federal funding for both the, the construction of this project, as well as the, uh, construction management, material testing, everything that goes into it, and, um, with this federal funds comes a, a higher degree of, of paperwork and recording and tracking of the funds back to, through Tech Dot, and so, um, with that enhanced, uh, amount of paperwork and requirements, uh, we typically bring in, uh, firms that, uh, that have expertise in that and can supplement our, our staff to, to make sure that we get all the proper, uh, things put together and submitted to Tech Dot for our eighty percent reimbursement throughout the project.
And, and if I'm to understand correctly, if we don't have this as part of the project, it could potentially risk the reimbursement?
I, if we don't, yes, if we don't, uh, complete all the paperwork properly, uh, we typically get audited during some point, uh, of, of these federally funded projects with Tech Dot, we've done very well through those, but it's, uh, you know, it's, uh, uh, attributable to having, uh, the good consultants on board, as well as our staff, um, documenting these projects properly.
And the CM project is, uh, also, uh, available for the eighty percent, um, reimbursement, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Does the council have any further question or comment on this item? The, the, the council have any further, uh, further comment or question on this item? I'm, I'm not, I'm still on mute.
No, Mayor, there's no more comments.
No more comments, okay. Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owen.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero to approve resolution number R twenty twenty dash one-one-one.
Moving into our agenda, item number three was for Hernandez, but he is not here tonight. Has he reported in yet? Hernandez, you have not reported in. Councilmember, Councilmember Perez, would you fill up that gap?
Glad to hear, consideration of possible action re- resolution number R two thousand twenty dash ninety-five, so move.
Second, this is Moore.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thanks, sir, uh, this is a renewal for, uh, a, a contract, and as the title of the resolution, that is for con- it's for street and sidewalk maintenance work, so it's, uh, concrete work, uh, in the public rights away, uh, you know, Mr., uh, Epperson can talk about some of the specific areas, uh, if he wants to, but, uh, had, uh, good experience with the contractor and, uh, renewals within the, uh, a lot of times, uh, so we have this, this renewal for the upcoming year, uh, straddling the two budget years, but Trent, maybe you want to talk about the, the scope and how this does, uh, get into some of the street work that's mentioned?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Pearson, sure, this, uh, you know, includes not only removal and replacement sidewalks, um, but, uh, removal and replacement of wheelchair ramps and any other ADA issues we find on the sidewalks, and then it's also, uh, concrete panel replacements, so where we have, uh, issues with, uh, concrete panels, uh, we use this contract to, uh, remove and replace those as well. So, as, as was mentioned earlier, um, there, there is a location mentioned here, Bailey, between Veterans and Bailey Bridge, uh, that's not a sidewalk replacement, that's actually an extension of some of the concrete there, where we have, uh, a, an asphalt transition, uh, that's, uh, that's continued to fail over time, so instead of, uh, continually patching that asphalt, we're going to go in there and extend some of the concrete, um, and, uh, and, and make that more permanent, and so, uh, that, that's, uh, part of this contract as well. So, if there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Yeah, Mr. Epperson, um, not only, not only is this from Bailey, between Bailey, um, Bailey Bridge and, um, Bailey Road, um, there on Veterans, but also past the bridge going towards Walnut or the EMS, um, admin building, that section of road there has gotten pretty bad, it's pretty torn up, I don't, I don't know if it makes sense that if they're already there, if they could go, you know, I don't know, a few more feet to, um, fix that area or not?
Are you, uh, on, actually on, uh, on Veterans?
On Veterans.
Okay, I mean, what else?
Past, past the, uh, past Centennial Park, going towards the EMS, um, admin building, um, that's, there's a stretch of road there that's pretty chewed up.
Okay, yes, we can take a look at that in our overall street program, I believe that's an asphalt segment, but we'll take a, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, Trent, on, uh, this contract, I've noticed in the green tea, there's been some people out here doing some work on the, uh, sidewalks, but they're looking at doing mudjacking, does this concrete, uh, this contract have anything like that in it?
Uh, no, sir, we have a separate contract for mudjacking with Concrete Raising Corporation, and, uh, we utilize that, uh, it's a, it's part of our overall streets and sidewalk program, but it's a separate contract.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember, any further question or comment on?
Yeah, there's, uh...
Now, we have, uh, uh, done a feasibility study to see if it makes more sense to hire two to a few more workers, uh, for the city and, and do something like sidewalk and road repairs themselves, seems like we have the equipment to do it, and for four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, uh, seems like we could potentially save some money.
Any other comments from the council? Here is none, I think, Madam Secretary, we have...
Uh, I have a little somebody to direct my comments.
Well, we, that, that deserves a, a more exhaustive write-up, uh, you know, obviously, uh, you know, we contract with, uh, private sector contractors for, uh, specialty work and, uh, uh, smaller scale, but, you know, between the materials and the equipment and the ongoing maintenance, uh, you know, our benefits and wages versus what, uh, can be done on the outside, I'd be, uh, I mean, it's pretty, pretty, uh, standard to, uh, contract out work like this, uh, you know, obviously, we need, I think, need to, we can, uh, explain that, uh, more completely in a follow-up memo, but I suggest that we do continue with this renewal for tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to take some information on this, and it seems like we subcontract everything out, we have a lot of employees that's looking for ways to cut future costs.
Well, I don't, it, it, you wouldn't do this for a cost saving, but we can explain that and, and show that, if you wanted, if typically bring that stuff in-house, you know, the, you want to do more of it year-round, or, uh, but, you know, our cost structure and, again, the, the nature of it, the one off to, to ramp up and bring it on and keep that up, uh, you know, that, that's, these are the kinds of things that you typically contract up as a, as a, uh, cost savings, actually. Just like weight services or any number of other things we contract up on.
Any other comment or question from the council?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, I've got a couple of things, uh, one, I think maybe, uh, maybe I'll offer an assist at that, um, I think that, I agree that this is a better, this is, this is better as a contract service, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars would barely even buy us a truck, uh, and we'd have to maintain it and buy all the material, um, so I, I think it's, it, this is better as a contract service for us, um, and, and in that line, uh, Trent, if I'm, uh, if I'm understanding, uh, the write-up correctly, we, uh, we've got sidewalk repair for, um, four, five, and six-foot sidewalk listed out within your, but if we break that down, that's about, um, uh, we're looking at about four dollars a square foot for, uh, for sidewalk repair based on the bid tab, correct?
I, I, I have another math, uh, I can look at it real quick, and we, that's probably accurate, yes, sir.
Okay, and that's...
Four foot wide for a foot is seventeen-twenty-five, so divided about four, it's all over four dollars square foot.
Okay, and I think, you know, typically, um, on, on, on construction projects, those, those numbers are getting closer to the seven or, uh, seven or eight dollars, um, a square foot, so we're still seeing savings, uh, on this contract, and we, and we should do our best to try and take advantage of it, um, this will bleed into one, uh, one item I was going to discuss in twelve, but maybe we can prep for it and, uh, for Saturday session, and then whenever the, um, item twelve is moved to, but I'd like to see if we can, uh, use, um, a- as much as, um, as much of the, um, the one-point-six million dollars to, um, to boost the fund for, uh, sidewalk and pavement repair, uh, since that continues to be the, the Peter that pays a lot of Pauls, um, and we're just getting behind, um, uh, Trent, one other thing I'd like to try and see if we can avoid, um, or at least phase out, is, um, using the, um, uh, using asphalt patching to repair, um, unlevel sidewalk, um, I know it, it helps us with the, from an ADA perspective, but I've, I've seen that repaired in place, and, and we've had that, uh, this discussion recently with a, a section in our subdivision, it just, it does not, um, it, one, it doesn't look very good, particularly in front of somebody's, uh, home or within a residential area, two, it just, I just think it's the, um, the wrong way for us to, to make those type of repairs, I don't see that there's a whole lot in this write-up for that type of repair, but if we can, uh, consider, um, phasing that out as a repair mechanism, uh, for sidewalk repair, even, even concrete pavement repair, I think that would be, um, uh, that would be a good move, um, and while we're in line with the sidewalk repair, um, could you provide maybe a Thursday write-up or some, at some point about, uh, any potential plans or future plans to repair the sidewalk that was built with Barry Miller, um, the Barry Miller roadway, uh, it's severely unlevel, um, I know there's more to do, it's more of a capital project, it's more to do than we can do under this contract, but, uh, maybe have some idea of when we could be targeting to make that repair, uh, since, um, uh, there's a lot of people that have walked that path and it's no longer, uh, accessible.
That, that's the Barry Miller, uh, school near there?
No, no, uh, I'm sorry, Barry Rose, I apologize, uh, uh, Barry Rose from Five Eighteen to Pearland Parkway.
Okay.
The sidewalk that was built basically flooding the, um, uh, flooding the curb, and it's, um, all of that has sunk probably six inches to a foot in some location, we had similar issues on Five Eighteen, but I know that the long-term strategy is that when that road gets expanded, a lot of that sidewalk's going to be replaced with that, so I, I, I suspect that the plan, uh, it continues to be that that, that sidewalk will get repaired with the road, but Barry, um, Barry Rose is, it's just getting worse, and I'd just like to see if we have a kind of a game plan and a CIP to tackle that sometime in the future, um, with that, uh, pulling support of this expenditure, hopefully we can find some additional money to get more sidewalk repaired, all of that, Mayor.
Mayor, if I could add one more thing, uh, during public comment, there was a, a speaker that mentioned some mudjacking and then going back and, and moving and replacing some segments, so, uh, staff will follow up with this on that as well.
Yes, sir, I, I think we addressed one recently in the council contact, and we'll just confirm if it's the same one and if we can address that.
Any other question or comment from the council? Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owen.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero to approve resolution number R twenty twenty dash ninety-five.
Moving into our agenda, item number four, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, consideration possible action resolution number R two-zero-two-zero dash one-one-four, so move.
Second.
We have a motion, we got a second on that?
Second, uh, member Perez.
We have got a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
So, item four is a recommendation for professional services, uh, to go in with, uh, this engineering firm, C P and Y, uh, this will be a TURS number two project, so, uh, it's basically in the Shadow Creek area, uh, with the TURS eligible funds, uh, we have a project that's been identified and we ran into the queue for funding, and that's, uh, uh, for the sidewalk placements, it's important to note that, uh, because of the rules of TURS, we cannot do replacements or repairs, this has to be for new sections, so, uh, we're going to be alongside the, uh, firm here and, uh, look at several areas, uh, within the boundaries, uh, where sidewalks don't exist, and, uh, uh, trying to be careful with the existing, uh, tree scape, tree cover, and, and other features, and, uh, retrofit, uh, these in, and, uh, get this done, and, uh, and then get the construction in the queue for, uh, TURS reimbursement before that expires, so, uh, council has seen the, the project in prior, uh, CIPs and discussions of, of the TURS, so, uh, the engineering here will be the, the step to move that forward, nothing to answer.
Good, council, council, any question or comment based on staff report, further?
Uh... One, and, uh, probably, well, you got this one, uh, we're going to do that is seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars in COs, and, uh, it says that the, in there, the TURS two will reimburse... and, uh, it says that the, in there, the TURS two will reimburse by twenty thirty. And I guess the thing I'd like to know is, when they reimburse it, if we, if we do on, on specific obligation on there, uh, will that reimbursement include the, uh, uh, interest and fees in addition to the dollar amount that we do?
Sure, as, as you probably recall through some of the budget memos we've shared in the past, uh, the act, the city actually comes out ahead because the interest rates on the COs and, uh, debt issuance for this are so low and the, uh, TURS days back, uh, rate, so it's actually, uh, the city comes out ahead.
Okay, and, um, I just wanted to say this would be a, a short time on the COs, but then it says it's, uh, by twenty thirty, is that, um?
Well, that's when the TURS ends and that's the worst case of, uh, if we were the last to, uh, uh, be reimbursed. And, and, you know, there, there's no absolute guarantees that there's going to be enough money in the TURS, but all the projections are, are indicating yes and positive, so that's why we need to, uh, get these going and get in line. Uh, you can't get reimbursed unless you're in line, you completed them and get in line. Uh, Fire Station Eight, uh, the entire construction equipment is one of these that's going to be paid for by the TURS.
Okay. Counselor, any further question or comment from staff?
Yes, Mayor, a couple of things. Um, one, um, I appreciate y'all pushing on this, I know I've been asking for a while, uh, particularly on one, uh, at least one aspect of the project. So I'd like to record, or like, uh, to make a request at the, um, um, the Business Center Drive sidewalk on the east side of the right-way, uh, in front of all those apartment complexes, get prioritized on this and see if we can get that done as quickly as possible. Again, just want to try and do our best to discourage those students that are walking from those apartments to schools and not have to walk in that, um, uh, in that roadway, which is, uh, fairly common at this point. Um, other thing, maybe we can have the consultant do this, or maybe we can do it in staff, if that had not been done already. Maybe reach out to, um, Alvin I S D and try and get an understanding of where, um, um, where there may be deficient sidewalk in mandatory walking areas or at least areas where the bus routes, uh, do not, do not travel because they're too close to the school. Also prioritize those sidewalks, uh, so we can get those built, uh, sooner rather than later. That's all I have, Mayor.
Good. Any further council member, hot questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Or, uh, and?
So I, I see on, 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 uh, number three, we talked about a lot of the areas that we were working on trying to replace on the sidewalk. And then here in number four, we're talking about putting in new sidewalk in, um, some of the Shadow Creek Ranch, um, area. Is there any, um, plans on doing any repairs for that area? Or is there any monies out of the TURS that can be used for any repairs out of there?
Uh, as I mentioned, uh, we cannot use the TURS monies for any repairs. So, uh, I think on that, uh, diagram, uh, with the, the reconstructions that we showed some of the areas that have been flagged and work orders for the, uh, repairs that we have in our inventory.
Okay, thank you.
Any further question or comment? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, I think we've got a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez. Councilmember Owen.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero to approve resolution R twenty twenty dash one four fifteen.
Okay, the motion, the new business item number five, uh, Councilmember Owen, who presented this for our consideration.
Consideration possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one one three, so move.
Second, this is more.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
So, uh, item five is a recommendation for a construction contract with, uh, Gilliland Smith Contractors. Uh, council's seen several of these, uh, lift station repairs as part of our wastewater, uh, treatment system. Uh, the city operates and responsible for, uh, scores of, of, uh, lift stations throughout town that, uh, uh, where we don't have grade, uh, that bring the material and, uh, you know, allow it to, to flow in to grab these sewers where, wherever possible. Uh, this lift station is, uh, uh, beyond its useful life, uh, not up to current standards, and so, again, complete evaluation and, uh, I need to get after this upgrade. Again, this is a part of our, uh, capital improvement program and reinvesting in our existing infrastructure. So, uh, recommend your positive consideration tonight.
Counselor, any other question or comment from staff report? That's a good report and a good project. Madam Secretary, I think we've got a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Owen.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash one thirteen.
Moving in our agenda, item number six, Councilmember Alonbo.
Consideration possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash seven two, so move.
Second, this is more.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, staff report.
So the next two items are, uh, contracts, uh, uh, we, uh, hope we don't have to use it all, but, uh, we actually, we know better. Uh, these are for emergency debris removal, uh, following what to expect with the, uh, uh, storm events. Uh, the first one here for Series is for the, uh, I'm sorry, is for the, the monitoring to Thompson Consulting. Uh, so if there is a hurricane and there has to be extensive record-keeping to make sure that the, uh, uh, quantities are, are measured and that the, uh, tipping, uh, is all documented, uh, and so we can report that back up for reimbursement. Um, and then I'll just, if, if you don't mind, I'll mention that the second one is the actual, uh, removal services. Went through evaluation process, uh, and, uh, the best, uh, qualified respondent for the city is, uh, Series, and that's all outlined in the, um, agenda item we went through the review process, uh, together. Uh, these have been, uh, uh, followed the process that'll put us in position for reimbursements, uh, if and when needed. Um, and there's, uh, federal disaster funds available. Uh, we need to have these in, in place for the upcoming hurricane season and, and then renew those, uh, so that they're at the ready and we have a better chance of having these contractors available, uh, when everybody else is, uh, calling for the same services. So, uh, council's familiar with these from Harvey and past, uh, storm events, these type of contracts, uh, and it's just part of our diligence and pre-planning for such events. So, nothing yet on, on this, sir.
Okay, is counsel having a question or comment based on staff report? And, uh, Clay, I think it's very wise of us to do this because we, uh, we found out during one of, like Ike, I believe it was, that, uh, we waited a little late, not too late, but we got a little late in the process. It's hard to find one that's a developer who will come in and, and perform these functions that need to be done for the P Network, so. Appreciate, appreciate this, uh, expedition type action on staff report.
Uh, criticals, Mr. Efferson, Mr. Whitwer and, uh, Paul the Works team, uh, so appreciate that, Mayor.
Good, counsel, any question or comment based on this item? Hearing none. I think we have a motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owen.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero to approve resolution, uh, R twenty twenty dash seventy-two.
Okay, the new business item seven, Councilmember Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor, consideration possible action resolution R twenty twenty dash seventy-three, so move.
Second, this is more.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, we're in discussion, staff report.
Uh, as mentioned, this is for the actual debris removal services and, uh, we went through and evaluated the proposals and, uh, Series environmental represents the, uh, uh, best qualified, the best overall, uh, value to the city. So recommend, uh, we get them lined up. Nothing to answer.
Counselor, any question or comment on this item?
Uh. Mayor, can staff go through the bid tabulation? Uh, I mean, the, the way it, it looks, we're comparing a hundred and sixteen million dollar bid tab versus eighty-eight million, um, is, is that every, every street and road in the city? Or, I don't know, it seems, seems odd to have such a high tab, so maybe staff can comment on that.
Can you follow this transfer clearance?
So I think one of the things we're looking at here is that multiple different types of removal, of different types of, uh, you know, whether it's, uh, vegetative debris, um, there's, uh, construction demolition debris, um, there, there's just many, many different types in here, and so we wanted to have sufficient quantities for any particular, uh, incident or event, um, to be able to, to, to capture, uh, good pricing. Um, but, you know, uh, uh, we don't expect it will, uh, utilize all of these different items in any, uh, individual event.
So, I guess the, the thought being that that we can estimate, estimate what we're, what we could potentially use on every category and then have it that way, would it not make more sense to come up with an estimate on what a hurt, uh, kind of estimate an event would look like, just, uh?
I, I, I think the way we look at it is, if, if you've got an event like Hurricane Ike, which was really a wind event, and so we removed a very significant amount, I think it was five or six million dollars of, uh, vegetative debris and trees and, uh, things like that, whereas in Hurricane Harvey, um, it was a completely different event, it was a flood event, and so we were removing, um, all of the, uh, flood debris. So it was, it was construction debris, it was, uh, sheet rock, it's carpet, it was the, that type of debris. Um, so there's, that, that, that's the different type of, uh, you know, things we're looking at, um, in, in the different bid items is, is my understanding.
Good.
So you have one event very heavy one way and another very heavy the other way, you want to capture it quite. Can approximate any type of event.
Good. Counselor, any further questions?
Uh, yes, Mayor, a couple of, uh, follow-ups. Um, uh, for, um, uh, for this reimbursable, uh, debris management, is that, um, is that only going to include, uh, residential cleanup or is that also commercial cleanup?
So, uh, my, my recollection is in the last event that, uh, residential cleanup is what is reimbursable. And maybe someone will jump in here and help me, um, and, and so that's what we've done. Uh, I don't recall we did commercially last go around.
Uh, Sir Efferson, this is Joel, uh, just to clarify, the, uh, feeable reimbursement program does not reimburse, uh, applicants or participants in that program for commercial debris removal. They will direct those, uh, entities to a FBA program. Um, but, um, the, the, the last event, we had all of our residential debris removal had been, uh, covered based on public assistance, um.
Um, I, I'd like to, at least for us to consider, maybe it's, uh, uh, maybe it's not appropriate to do it in this since this is just a general application, so that we have a program in case there's an event, but in advance of, um, awarding a specific funds, uh, you know, maybe, maybe we can do this per event, but let's keep in mind that, um, during Harvey, we had a few, uh, small businesses that just, uh, that were devastated, particularly on Five Eighteen, that just couldn't, couldn't afford, uh, to, to have their debris removed, and, uh, it just sat there for a long period of time, uh, without really a plan in place on how to get it removed. Uh, so we want to make sure that we have a backup plan, uh, for that or an opportunity for, for council to consider whether we'll risk not getting reimbursed for country, uh, for commercial, uh, commercial, um, uh, debris cleanup or debris cleanup associated with a commercial project just to be able to get the city back on track in a, in, in a quicker basis. Um, and then also, um, do we or can we have anything in the contract, uh, that's punitive if the contractor leaves us before the work is completed? I know we had that problem in Harvey where, uh, we had our debris, uh, our debris cleanup contractor left because it was a storm in Florida, it was paying higher rates, if I remember correctly. Uh, we want to make sure that, you know, during hurricane season, if there's a, there's two events right on top of each other, we're not left kind of high and dry, picking up our own stuff because they went off to, uh, another state to deal with a bigger storm.
This is a question by a council decision.
We can, we can, uh, follow up on that, Mayor Perez, that frankly, I don't know anybody's going to sign up in a deal where they're going to, uh, obligate themselves to, uh, future punitive for unknowns like that. I, uh, we live that, I know what you're saying, and, uh, it's a consideration, but, you know, getting them in place and, uh, uh, you know, so ready to go, um, and execute it, I mean, that's probably our best insurance to make sure that they're available, uh, you know, when the time comes, but.
Well, let him know something, let him know something, what we do for similar projects to have a backup contract, uh, in case one leaves and we can use somebody else.
I was going to say, I, I do know that during Harvey, we, you know, that while there was another storm and there was a lot of assets that left the entirety of the Gulf Coast region, um, that, uh, they continued to pick up, um, and, and we were diminishing at that point as well. So I think as long as there's, you know, significant debris, they're, they're going to stay on site and continue that work. Um, and as, as far as, you know, backup, I, I think we've looked at that in the past, um, but we've, we've never pulled the trigger on those. We haven't had to.
And, and I would think too that, uh, the downside of that would be the same, well, I think, uh, people are going to be less likely to commit to a, a backup, you know, when, you know, they're not going to get called upon, uh, but for, but, um, you know, as Trent mentioned, you know, I remember too, you know, when they left, it had been, you know, they, they, it was towards the end of the event and then we were able to add some claws and some other equipment for all staff and, and get after the, for the, everything got done, so.
Um, all right, I guess we'll just, um, we'll probably take a closer look at that if, if and when we need, uh, need this contract. At least we have something going, um, maybe we can come to contingencies, um, uh, uh, immediately after an event if necessary. But, uh, I would like, I would like us to consider or make sure that the contractor is capable and willing, uh, upon, um, council approval for us to, um, remove commercial, um, waste if needed, um, if we need to risk the reimbursement that's funded by me, because when we go to just leave trash out and, uh, on Five Eighteen or in, in throughout the city for a long period of time.
Well, we, we'll take that and I think just to kind of, uh, put some ground around the way this contract functions while there, the debris management, um, they've got approximately three plus subcontractors that move the debris and work under this contract. So there, you know, there's a lot of assets in this area and a lot of them that will stay here as long as there isn't removed, to be removed as long as, uh, e- even when there is another event, uh, somewhere else. So we're, we're comfortable that, you know, we'll continue to have folks available when, uh, when we need them.
True. And you know, Trent, during that period of time too, waste management kicked in and, uh, carried a lot of the waste out too.
Uh, this is Councilman Little, um, looking at the, the two lowest bids, uh, one of the primary reasons for not going to the lowest bidder was Graham was that they were out of state and not familiar with the type of disasters we were experiencing in the Gulf region, Gulf Coast region. Uh, the second lowest bidder was a bit a little over a million higher than the lowest. Graham County is a Texas-based company up around the Austin area, and one of the reasons was that they couldn't mobilize as quickly as, uh, parish, um, and some of the technical, um, differences in the company. Uh, just, um, in thinking about this, I mean, they're hauling garbage and debris. Um, they're using equipment loaded in micro trucks and hauling to landfills, and it doesn't seem like it requires a lot of technical expertise to haul garbage and twenty-six million dollar difference in the bid. Um, and, you know, for not being able to mobilize as quick and maybe not having the, uh, as sophisticated computers, uh, just seems like a, a lot to overcome, uh, to make, um, twenty-six million dollar difference.
So, remember Little, I think as was mentioned earlier, you know, that those are the unit costs, uh, all encompassing. Um, it's also a lot of different types of equipment as well as different types of debris. Um, you know, we expected any given disaster. Uh, if you take Hurricane Harvey, I think we had about a million and a half dollars of debris removal in, in Hurricane Ike. It was five or six million dollars. So all these are used for comparison purposes. If you scale it down to an actual event, I think the difference is much smaller. And, uh, you know, being able to mobilize quickly being here, having a significant number of subcontractors in this region, this Gulf Coast region, Houston area, um, as well as, uh, some of the, the, the things they do, um, you know, to, to ensure whatever damage, uh, is tracked properly. They've got an automated debris management system that they use that goes beyond just GPS tracking the trucks, which helps make sure all the documentation is in place for the, uh, the prior contract that we just awarded. So for, for all those reasons, uh, you know, to, and, and expedite reimbursement, at least we recommend, we recommend it, Colonel.
Thank you. Good question, a good question. Any further comments?
Yes, um, Mr. Epperson, was the, was this the same company we used for Harvey?
Yes, sir. This was the company that was used during Harvey.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a question or comment? Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion. I'm second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen? Councilmember Owen?
Mm-hmm.
Is Councilmember Owen still on the line?
He does appear to be on the line, yes.
I'll come back to Councilmember Owen. Councilmember Armando?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
It, it doesn't look like he's got his board in hand just a second. Let me see if I can, I just sent him a text to see where he was.
That passed either way, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, I believe this is a very valuable and essential issue that we're talking about. So we need to have a full hold on this item. That's our invi, uh, inviator. Have you checked with, um, Owens?
Uh, IT is holding right now. There's some cultural problems.
I tried following him, I already was on his phone.
Miss? I can't see him online.
About now.
Yeah.
I hear you now.
I'll, I'll say.
I can, I can hear you now.
Councilmember Owen, can you please, um, advance of your vote?
Yes, aye.
Aye. The motion passes five, two, one.
Okay, that information wrapped up. Let's move to item number eight, which is left, uh, Councilmember Little, excellent presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on possible action, first reading for just number one five nine one seven two.
Second, Mr. Moore.
Got a motion of a second. We're discussing that. We're ready for staff report.
So Mayor, uh, and Council, this is, uh, uh, I made it a, another proactive, uh, planning ahead, uh, item for contingency. And this has to do with our water, uh, usage. Uh, this is a requirement of the, the state to have such a plan. We have an existing one. Uh, what's before you is the first reading for, uh, updates to that plan, uh, both in terms of language and some of the, uh, uh, systems that are used. Uh, this, uh, uh, the city of Pearland's, uh, uh, is in a good position in prior, uh, water emergencies and droughts in the region and the state uh, because of our varied sources. Uh, but that still doesn't mean that we shouldn't have a, uh, plan in place if we did have to call upon it. Uh, it is tiered, uh, such that, um, you know, uh, as a, our drought progresses that, uh, you know, you move from one stage to another in terms of alternate and trying to lower the, uh, water usage, uh, uh, odd even and those kinds of, uh, options. And then mandatory ultimately, but the city of Pearland has not had to be in that composition. So, uh, this is the first reading of this ordinance and, and as I said, it updates, uh, what has been out on the books to this point. Uh, and we do need to do this to, uh, be in compliance with TWDB for, uh, our other work with them. So nothing else to answer.
Council needs to know that, uh, this is a very important issue. Uh, if you have any question or comment based on the stand of report.
I don't know if you have the information on it or not, but, you know, when you go in, you look, see all this, that's thirty-four point five million gallons a day. What, do, do we have any numbers of what is our daily usage, uh, in Pearland? Is just an average? Do we use, uh, thirty-four million gallons a day?
Commander, Robert, can I follow up that number?
I think the thirty-four, um, million is our current capacity. And, um, you know, if, if you look at our average day use, it's, it's probably around half of that. Twelve to sixteen million on an average day demand.
About how much fifteen a day?
Uh, about, uh, twelve to sixteen. And of course you have to build your system based on your max day demand.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to bring it on the freshwater plant. That's another ten million. It can go to capacity of twenty, uh, million gallons a day. But going back to the original plan, uh, when we talked about bringing in the, uh, freshwater plant at ten million gallons a day, we were going to, um, not use any more of the city of Houston, um, ten million gallons a day because of the price keep escalating every year, uh, through there. And we thought bringing the extra line down through my car through there from the fresh, you know, plant in the, in Houston that we're buying from, we could actually not buy that water on the, uh, from the city of Houston. So I was just wondering, is that still part of the plan after we bring the freshwater plant on? Is to not use that, uh, pay or take on the ten million gallons a day out of the, the west side for the city?
So, uh, Minister, I, I don't think we've ever said we do not need the six million gallon connection on the west side from the city of Houston. Um, uh, we will need that. We need that to meet our max day demand. Um, what, what we have planned out is that when the surface water plant goes online, that, uh, we will, you know, reduce that amount um, to the, to the, uh, to, to a minimum to take amount. So we don't pay the premiums for going over that amount. And, um, and so we'll reduce the, the amount we'll use out of there significantly, especially during the low use months, the winter months. Uh, but during our peak, uh, demand during the summertime, we'll, we'll always have to rely on that source as well.
Yeah, well, we put the, uh, you know, ball into the southeast plant in Houston through there to, and, uh, buying the end of that and bringing it in on the east side. That's our whole point, running a water line down the car over there because we said we could pay for the design and pay for the, uh, uh, construction of the water line in nine years, just in the difference in the price of water that we paid. Because we had looked at it during that time and for five years, every year, we got an increase on the west side over there, uh, on the water price, uh, because we weren't part of that plant there in the, in the city of Houston. So, and I don't know what the rate is on today, but it was pretty significant during that time, uh, as compared to what we paid for the plant that we're part of out of the eastern area.
Council, is there a further comment or questions on this item? I don't know, I'm sorry.
Senator, if I can jump in, uh, I mean, this talks about our, our usage and, and water loss and decreasing water loss. I guess at the end of this whole water billing stamp, I, I'd like to see some sort of overall accounting in terms of, uh, we meter how much water we're, we're buying from Houston. We meter our wells and come back to my, my pipeline accounting, you know, all of your oil companies meter what goes in the pipe and what comes out of the pipe. And I think we could do the same thing within some tolerances just to, to see where we're at. Um, and with all this smart meter, um, I, I would think it would help to detect leaks quicker. Um, anyway, I'd just like to see like a usage, more of a pipeline calculation. I think we've, we've got kind of some of the baseline numbers, but the closer we can get to, to making it real time away from a annualized or a, a, a four-year average, I think would be helpful for, for all involved.
Yes, sir. We, we check up those numbers and, you know, um, the difficulty now in kind of one for one is that, uh, all of our production as well, as well as our meters being built from the city of Houston, that's on a month-to-month basis. And then our reed cycles for all of our meters are imported and recycled. So that's, that's where it becomes a little bit more difficult to reconcile that. But once AMI is up, we'll be able to produce, uh, that information on the same reed cycle as our production and purchase order. And, uh, definitely take a closer look at that.
All right. Thank you. And I know this plan, I mean, it's, it's a detailed plan. I hope we don't have to use it, but, uh, I guess it's one of the costs of the, the chief, uh, DWDB funds. But, but thank you, staff, for putting it together.
Mm-hmm. Good. Is there further comment or question from council? Very none, um, Secretary.
Hey, Crystal, I just wanted to let you know that Councilmember Hernandez is now on the line.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to the bureau, uh, to, uh, not the first, uh, order number fifteen on the court.
Very good. That's one of our real concerns about water and other things. Moving to our agenda to, um, that's a little bit of good jab on that. Moving to item number nine, I'll ask, uh, a city manager to, uh, address this issue. Maybe we read the item and then present the comments.
Sure. So, thank you, Mayor Council. This is, uh, um, uh, the, this is discussion number two. Uh, and this relates to the new Texas Cares Act, uh, funding. Uh, these are money that, uh, flowed from the federal government to, uh, the state of Texas. And they in turn have, uh, made direct allocations to the city of Pearland, uh, which we're very interested in getting into circulation and providing relief and, uh, assistance, uh, both for the city, uh, our budget and for, uh, residents and businesses. Uh, so we had, uh, two weeks ago, discussion number one, uh, just to frame the issues a little bit. Uh, council gave us some good feedback on, uh, different buckets and, uh, that have been identified for that. Um, and so we're here, uh, we're, we've fine tuned this to the next level. We have a, a, a working budget, uh, just to continue the discussion. Um, and so that's what the item number nine is. Uh, just to outline the whole process, um, we do have in item ten, a recovery plan, which we believe would be, uh, useful for the city and also a reference point, uh, when we're going for various grants and other, uh, assistance programs above and beyond this immediate one. Uh, so, uh, this has been, uh, assembled into this, uh, COVID nineteen to the impact recovery plan. Um, and as you saw in that, it goes beyond just the city's recovery. It's trying to talk about the community overall. Uh, this is an area of emphasis of increasingly of, uh, FEMA and other, uh, disaster recovery agencies to have a plan like this for community recovery, not just, uh, uh, you know, immediate impact mitigation. Uh, and then item eleven is going to be, uh, uh, I think there's been very solid consensus around. And this is, uh, probably the primary thing, uh, that's from the Texas Cares Act. We'd like to formalize and, and take off the top, if you will, uh, the allocation from the six million dollars and reimburse and set, well, set aside money for the city and reimburse ourselves for our direct, uh, COVID nineteen responses to date. And then set some monies aside, uh, for this ongoing, it's not over, uh, responses. And then start to get into some of the mitigation, uh, and risk reduction, uh, for the, the staff and the public, uh, so as we continue our, of our operations. So that's an overview of these three, but, uh, ask us to hurry to jump in now. We've got a presentation to, uh, share to, uh, help, help guide the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mayor and Council, as, uh, Clay discussed, uh, we do have a, a, a very basic overview of our work over the last couple of weeks to develop a plan, structure for, um, allocating costs in specific areas that need, you know, attention with regard to, uh, COVID's impact and, uh, on the community as well as on the city resources. But we can go to the next slide, uh, and just kind of recap where we are. Uh, again, as Clay mentioned, we've got, uh, a six million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand five dollar allocation that comes on the state directly to the city, uh, for our population in the Dorrity County, which is calculated to be one hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one, based on two thousand and nineteen census. Uh, the state authorized agency for this money is going to be the Texas Division of Emergency Management. That's who we'll deal with to, uh, meet the reporting requirements and report drawdowns of, uh, the funds. We were allocated an initial twenty percent, uh, immediately in form of cash, uh, deposit to the city. But anything beyond that, towards the sixty point three million dollars, we will of course have to provide documentation and support our expenses for reimbursement purposes. And, uh, as Clay mentioned, this money does have to be spent by December thirtieth of twenty twenty. And we've got some P activities to date that have brought us to this point, uh, if you want to look at those, uh, going forward. One important one I think I want to point out is that, uh, I think the FEMA staff, uh, and of course the support from council is active pretty rapidly on this, uh, considering we just found out May twelve, that we would receive these funds. Prior to that, uh, we thought we were going to kind of do something wood because there was no, uh, specific allocation or discussion about what a small city would deal with as far as this, uh, money. But, uh, the governor, uh, uh, decided to allocate funds to local communities below five hundred thousand population. And that's, uh, uh, been a very good thing for, uh, places like Pearland. So we'll go to the next slide. We can quick, quickly go over the, uh, four basic areas that we have, uh, taken powerful direction. And look at the business in the community, uh, to break down, uh, expenditure allocation. We discuss all the services needs, um, the plan intends to allocate one point six million dollars, which is about twenty-five percent of the total amount. Um, allocate two hundred thousand, which is about three percent of the total amount of public health activities and testing. Two point five million, which is just under forty percent for business recovery, uh, in the community. And as Clay mentioned, making sure that the costs that we've incurred on behalf of the city as well as future mitigation efforts are intended to. And that's, uh, just over two million dollars, about thirty-three percent. And to date, we've incurred. And to date, we've incurred, uh, expenses that closed about fifteen percent of the total amount of the. Next slide. So along the lines of social services, uh, there are some, um, key needs in the community that we've identified throughout the process and this discussion. Uh, food delivery for the elderly and disabled is very important. Uh, we've got an unmet, met need in the community where no health services are concerned. There is a need for, uh, being able to sustain some of the existing workforce development activities. Uh, agencies, uh, specifically the adult education center is going to be very important helping to, uh, get the local economy to recover through jobs. Uh, rental assistance and utility assistance have also been remarkable, uh, unmet need in the community. And those two items will be covered, uh, through the one point six million dollars. We do have an RFP out, uh, if you go back to the other slide, uh, we do have an RFP out right now, uh, to procure a third-party, uh, delivery entity for rental assistance and utility assistance. And we will keep, uh, accountable and faithful in the form of the progress and the letting of vendors to provide the assistance. Uh, next slide. So this is just a visual breakdown of the, um, costs within that six, one point six million dollars. Uh, we are assessing that there is a hundred thousand dollar unmet need for the people of these services are concerned. One point three million for rental and utility assistance. Mental health services comes in at fifty thousand dollars and we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars unmet need for education, workforce development. Next slide. Uh, we talked about public health, uh, measures and testing. Uh, we are proposing to allocate two hundred thousand dollars for unreimbursed mandatory testing or support in the community. With employee testing, uh, particularly concerned where our public safety, uh, employees are concerned and those at the front line that are high-risk, uh, in contact with citizens in public health spaces. And we've also discussed, uh, raising our intelligence, if you will, when it comes to, uh, public health epidemiology. Making sure that we've got some surveillance, knowledge and consulting with subject matter experts that can help, uh, interface with the other local governments that have public health authorities and also maintain strong, uh, support for our city protocol. Next slide. Uh, along the lines of business recovery, uh, this slide talks, uh, about a couple of basic, uh, ideas that we'd like to achieve. Number one would be to, uh, make sure that there's businesses that qualify, uh, able to recruit the cost of prevention and safety measures. Specifically, uh, things like PPE and materials and supplies that they use to make their places safer for doing business. Right now, a lot are having, you know, a protective glass installations, restaurant supplies in the form of printed menus and things like that. We want to make sure that we're in a position to develop those costs. And of course, the larger picture involves assisting businesses with loss recovery, uh, from the closings and so. Next slide. Uh, as far as our direct expenses go, uh, we have incurred expenses to date and are also concerned about future mitigation for the coronavirus. And those specifically entail reimbursing for eligible personnel costs. We basically got three areas of concern. One involves the planning and implementation for our continuity of operations, keeping the city, uh, alive and operating, uh, during the, the phase of, uh, the coronavirus, where we were remote working and keeping those facilities running and allowing them to, uh, uh, to continue. We also have a concern over the field specific hazard pay that, uh, public safety and other officials, uh, would, uh, incur or their exposure, their risk of being out, full of doubts that, uh, make them come in contact with, uh, high-risk, uh, individuals in the community that they've been exposed to or, uh, uh, suffering from coronavirus. And we also have a small portion, uh, that we are, uh, making sure is available for those that, uh, were on pandemic leave as far as we, we, we're concerned. Uh, there's also a group of people sanitizing the facilities. Uh, we have a contract in place right now, so there have been some incurred expenses. Uh, but we'd like for this to be able to continue throughout the period of concern. And that way we can maintain the workplace as safe for our employees and citizens that come into contact with our buildings. Uh, we're also talking about retrofitting, uh, city facilities, especially the high-touch areas with special fixtures and features, uh, usually being commodes, uh, faucets, door handles and things like that, automatic doors, the kind of thing for people that are infected with virus based on, uh, having to test over by a very busy. Uh, and then finally, uh, reimbursement of materials and supplies used to prevent the coronavirus. We of course have had to purchase our own PPE and sanitizers and cleaners and things like that. We want to make sure that, uh, those items are reimbursed. Next slide. So this will give you a breakdown of the direct expenses, uh, within that discussion. Uh, the facilities clean, we want to take that out through a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I believe that should give us what we need throughout the course of the calendar year to be able to cover all the city facilities. Um, the building in Brown's, uh, line, you can see that for three hundred thousand would be the replicits on this test. Um, computer hardware items at a hundred thousand dollars, these are the things that we have even incurred to keep remote work capabilities alive, make sure that the, uh, activities we're conducting right now, having, uh, virtual council meetings and other public interface is able to take place. And also again, to carry these kinds of items, uh, through to the mental calendar if necessary. Um, and, and the next line item will be our materials and supplies, again, we discussed having some costs incurred involving PPE, other materials that we needed more to prevent the coronavirus. And, um, uh, finally, the personnel spend, expenditures and assignment pay. Those are the expenses that we've incurred to date, plus the additional hazard pay that we will extend to, uh, other city employees along, along with. Next slide. This just breaks down that, uh, uh, one point, uh, four million dollars. Uh, we're talking about the, uh, uh, costs we've incurred to date, come to about eight hundred and eighty-two thousand for, uh, continuity of operations. Uh, the pandemic leave, we want to make sure that we've got what we've incurred and through December thirtieth of twenty twenty, uh, covered. And, uh, we're budgeting four hundred and seventy thousand for the field assignment pay or hazard pay, uh, for, uh, public safety and other, uh, citizens that come in contact with us. Uh, this, uh, image right here is taken directly from the plan, so it's kind of a, a, a final painted breakdown, summary of all the extensions that we discussed. And, uh, this is, uh, what we would ultimately now believe, uh, design in the form of the special revenue fund that we've, uh, created for this. And that way you can see all the details. Next slide. Uh, one thing that's not included during the session tonight, but we will, uh, bring back to council at a future date, are we spending allocations in Harrah County and Fort Bend County. Uh, the Fort Bend allocation, uh, is rather small. Uh, we are planning on setting an agreement with Fort Bend County that's going to revive it this time. The original agreement was, uh, uh, missing a couple of factors and we wanted to get that back to its revised form. The capital was fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. The citizens in Harland that are designing Fort Bend County. And similarly, the situation where Harrah County is concerned, uh, the population in, in that portion of Harland, uh, which amounts to, that's maybe two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five. Both of these are based on that same fifty-five dollar per capita, uh, allocation based on the population. So next steps, uh, tonight, as Clay mentioned, we've got two action items, uh, scheduled to appear right after this discussion. One is to adopt the, the recovery plan, if you will. And that will give us the, uh, impetus for carrying out these measures along the lines of council agrees to and supports. And, um, the next item would be to take specific action on the amount of funds that we have already incurred, uh, at the city and, uh, allow us to reimburse ourselves with the coronavirus relief fund that we have in place right now. Uh, for the future, we want to make sure that council understands we will come back for ongoing input discussion. Uh, we won't, uh, administratively or arbitrarily make decisions about, uh, the changes that take place. We'll make sure we come back and the stuff provided with you and, uh, take on the responsibility of presenting the appropriate budget amendments uh, as they come forward. But I think this plan gives us a starting place and allows us to recap this discussion and start to, uh, uh, make some headway in, in the form of public community. Uh, and, and this city, uh, reimbursed this, this expenditure. So with that said, uh, that wraps up my, uh, presentation and I will pass back the balance to council for the summary.
Before we do that, uh, uh, Dan, could you move this slide up? And so, uh, you know, any, uh, feedback or, and, and general, uh, considerations, uh, council, as I said, uh, provide some good parameters and we take that to the next level here. And, uh, look forward to doing that. There's still a ton of work to do to, uh, bring this to reality. So, you know, we're designing this as we go along and trying to be diligent about, uh, uh, you know, all the different possibilities and, uh, you know, any, uh, thoughts or feedback at this juncture before we got into the items would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
First of all, items total about one point three million. Uh, is this, uh, similar to the, uh, PPE plan that was for private businesses? You're getting reimbursed for money spent and paying people during the quarantine COVID period?
So that would not be for PPE, uh, per se. It's, it's for labor costs, wa- wages and benefits. So the first one encapsulates, uh, what we've actually spent. I'm sorry, the second one, eighty-two. Uh, we spent about seven fifty, something like that. And so the rest of us to, uh, recognize that we'll have this continuing. And then the four-seventy is this new thing of, uh, going back now. And for those that have continued to work in the field and didn't have the option of working remotely, uh, police, fire, public works, et cetera, kept the plants going that we all relied upon, uh, some sort of, uh, uh, allocation for that. So that's what that four-seventy is for.
Four hundred and seventy thousand is for hazard pay?
Yes, sir.
And this is in addition to their regular salary?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, for the personnel dedicated, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, um, most of those people are, were, they're all city employees, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's for city employees who have been working the last two, three months, whatever it's been already, and had, had work that was charged, um, to the COVID code. So whether it was, uh, uh, police officers that were, uh, monitoring the parking lots at, at the grocery stores or whether it was, uh, fire staff that made the transport, all the work and the emergency management team. Um, those are, uh, that, that's for labor involved in that to date. That's right. And that's, that's, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. That's the reimbursement to the city for our expenses.
Okay, so, uh, and these are all salary employees, correct?
Uh, salary and hourly, yeah.
Okay, uh, but the bulk of them are sal- uh, salary?
No, the bulk of them would be more hourly because police, fire, public works, staff, line staff.
And then we incur a lot of overtime as a result of the COVID?
Uh, you know, that being encapsulated there, uh, I, I would say not on the, I would say not because of COVID. If there wasn't much overtime, it was people dedicated to that, to that work. It wasn't like a Harvey situation where you had holding people over, uh, you know, uh, all that kind of stuff. So it is the people during the scheduled timeframe really, I would say.
Okay, so are they receiving this money, uh, above and beyond the, the normal salary in an hourly wages? Or is this just something that's going into the city's coffers?
It's reimbursed in the city for expenses. So just like, uh, when we expend for a, a weather emergency, we get reimbursed for that. That's what that eighty-two does.
Okay, so this would, uh, tend to show, create a favorable budget variance in payroll, wouldn't it?
Well, it, it, it's, yeah, it's going to help us, uh, cover those costs, correct?
Okay, because we, we have a budget for their salaries and hourly wages anyway, and now we're getting reimbursed from the federal government.
Right.
These are expenses that we would have incurred, but we're not, um, we're not incurring them now.
We're incurring, but we're getting reimbursed for it, so it's, uh, we're going to be eight hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars,
um, on the positive side for, for city payroll.
Yeah, but, uh, the flip side of that is that on the revenue side, you know, there's plenty of revenue losses, uh, you know, as you know, from, uh, sales tax and, and other activities that on the positive side.
The, the payroll line item will be positive, of course, it's the expenses for elsewhere.
Right.
Are also revenue.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
If I could add, uh, Clay and council and mayor, um, mayors will have some backfield considerations when it comes to employees that were not necessarily dedicated to these times in the past. Uh, a lot of these funds were used to report the cost to the people who were rededicated to responding to the, to the coronavirus, uh, whether they were administrative or performing public, uh, emergency medical duties. So, as Clay said, some of those may walk on.
How many of them employees are getting, getting the hazard pay?
So we haven't, uh, fully developed that. I mean, I think it's in the reporting. I, I don't know if we included that here, but you've seen some of the, the mix of positions. I mean, what was her estimate, Joe, our last talked about? How many people might fall into that category with their assignments?
Um, that is, uh, information I don't think we have fully available at this time. But we are working on that. As, uh, Clay said, and I think it's going to involve, um, public safety, emergency medical staff and, you know, public work is always, uh, continuing well, too.
I think, we, we had like, uh, just some back, the, we're thinking like between four and five hundred, uh, staff that might be eligible for that.
Council, I have a question on this primarily for two about, uh, the virus aid relief and, uh, economic stimulation funding.
Yes, Mayor, I, I, um, with respect to the hazard pay, um, in, in the right, there's not as, uh, there's not a definition of qualifying, uh, qualifying, or what defines hazard pay? Uh, nor do I think that there's any understanding that who is going to, um, provide that definition since there are punitive measures that would be mis, uh, misuse of these funds. Um, what, what would, what are we using as guidance as to, to provide hazard?
Sure.
What's the definition of hazard pay?
I'll start out and then Joe can help. Uh, but conceptually, you know, we do have, uh, designations in our, um, uh, disaster planning for essential, uh, personnel and also for, uh, there's another category that was like, you know, had to be on the job basically versus couldn't work remote. Um, so there's people, we, we've got classifications of two different job titles. And the other, uh, tell or, or, uh, uh, useful piece of information would be, uh, people that have tag time already to COVID response. So, uh, you know, that, that would tell you that they've had to do some, uh, COVID kind of related work in the field, um, to, to do that. So it, it's not satisfied because it's still a work in progress. We, uh, it's sort of chicken and the egg, like, you know, budget-wise and all that and, uh, but, but what I just described is, you know, conceptually trying to get our heads towards a recommendation for how you define that. So if you feel personnel who couldn't work remote, uh, kept us going, made responses, and then also were, uh, critical who couldn't work remote for, you know, public works, operations, water, sewer plants that, uh, uh, were in the same category.
Um, with the business recovery, uh, portion, have we made definitions about what we're going to use and how we're going to qualify people for, uh, a portion of that, uh, two point five million? Or was that still a work in progress?
Well, that's, that's a, a work in progress. There are models that have been used around, uh, the state where, uh, people have a little bit more time to sort that through. Um, and as we keep referring to, there's, uh, a firm that PDC has identified, uh, um, and they've got, you know, a plant model program. Once we, uh, get into this, uh, they can do that. Uh, the, the one slide that talks about the, the small businesses and the types of things, you know, those are the, sort of the, conceptually the ideas that would be into that.
And if I recall, you stated previously that it would be the third-party vendor who'd be used to, uh, sort through, um, applications for the business recovery from, from local businesses, uh, staff or, um, the chamber, any, any, uh, existing or local entity.
We'll, we'll give you a criteria and a program, get your, uh, blessing on that, and then turn that over to a third-party administrator.
And, um, on the, um, uh, health side, we're, uh, we're looking for medical, uh, testing reimbursement. Is that, is that reimbursement for expenditures that we have already made? Is that for like, uh, ten minutes? Is that for like uh ten minutes staff? Or is that to stand up a testing facility?
No, so it's two things. It's a uh there there is a a group, a small group, that we think it's uh fair. So the the nursing homes, as we understand it, they uh the state uh tested the first round, uh paid for that testing for their residents. But then the subcon ones, which we've heard runs almost a thousand dollars per resident, um they they were not covered. So I think uh you know, since they were required to do that, you know, that's appropriate use of the funds, that's one group of it. And then we also, if we need testing for employees to return to work, uh we haven't gotten into that, but uh you know, if we did need that, um that that we'd have an allocation that could provide that till we had it. But the the testing facilities and so forth that have been stood up, you know, they've been um, you know, they've been working, they've been growing uh from the state agencies and partners and private providers. So uh that's that's separate from from what this would be.
So we would, is this focusing on, if I'm I'm not saying it correctly, is this focusing on reimbursing citizens who have uh incurred costs or tests?
No.
That are not covered for, covered by insurance?
No, with this with this, the idea for this was the larger facilities that were ordered to do testing, uh the nursing homes, and and they're not getting reimbursed. And then for for the city, if we do testing for return to work kind of uh situations.
So so not the individuals in the nursing home, but the nursing home itself that was ordered to provide the service?
Correct.
So Wensong had to test everybody in the facility and they incurred a loss, and this would allow them to be reimbursed?
Right, multiple times they had to retest and test.
Okay, and do we have, we haven't understand that what that value is? Is it, I I'm assuming it would be under the two hundred thousand, but do we know for sure?
No, I mean, that's the the budget we, the best testing we have right now, so.
Okay, um is there and i- i- is there a possibility of allocating any of the many operations potentially have uh or help stand up or help reimburse or support a um a local vendor to expand some testing for the citizens who want uh want or need a test?
I I don't know that we've heard much call for that or or people who weren't able to get in for a test. So um you know, Joel can probably tune into that better, but that hasn't been something that's percolated at all that's uh a a big gap at all. I could be wrong, Joel, maybe you want to share on that.
Yeah, we have not seen any of that kind of information come across. Um I think one thing we're trying to accomplish here is to put a placeholder in place and should those conditions change, you know, be prepared to come back to council and request reallocation from an area that might not be as uh robust as anticipated. Again, this is just our first uh test effort, putting some uh frameworks in place around the fund and uh using this as a launchpad if we will for moving forward.
Uh yeah, I understand that, and um I don't mean to be critical, it's not that. It's just um it's possible that we're not hearing that from people who are typically uncommunicative with us, that are low income citizens, which are the like, most likely to have a lack of insurance uh and would be more greatly affected if they um if they had to be quarantined, are probably, you know, not the type of people that would normally reach out to us for uh for these type of things. Um again, just kind of speculating. Perhaps um as we build the program, we can reach out to our local charities that seem to have a pulse on our low income um uh community, uh the neighborhood center, um the Y M C A, uh charity such as that. And possibly, you know, maybe creating a system where we could reach out to low income citizens and and provide an opportunity for them to get tested if they're, if it's warranted, if they see an exposure or symptomatic or some sort of standards that they, we can identify those people. What we would hate is to have people who can't afford to be tested or don't have the the mechanism or the ability to be tested and not not have a provision and they're wandering around a community unidentified as being COVID carry.
So one thing we do have in the uh incident command structure are um branches for each one of these areas. And uh the social services branch is one that's by design, got some uh tentacles out in the community, and we're, you know, regularly in contact with those agencies, getting feedback uh you know, remotely uh informally. But we can expand that to uh um, you know, kind of getting the information about those those concerns. And uh again, you know, as we progress, uh come back to council if need be to make adjustments to to get the right allocation in, if this isn't it. So um um I think that's uh a good way of approaching uh moving forward so we don't uh evolve to unmet needs and ignore something that needs to be addressed.
Uh yeah, maybe that's just my two cents, but I I mean, as much as business recovery is um is necessary, I think at this point, while the um while we're still in the midst of uh of this pandemic, trying to find better, trying to at least stand up resources, better identify who has the disease and trying to prevent spreading, um is is where I would prefer us to spend um one of this allocation if we can. Um you know, I'm welcoming the other council member, see if they agree or disagree with it.
So another element of this, uh number first, we've got something uh uh earmarked for epidemiology and for public health conditions. And we'd like to see us expand our capacity for being able to assess what's going on in the community in that regard and um you know, assign a professional with a subject matter expertise to be able to do so um and and work with the city to kind of, you know, guide us in that regard. That's that's one missing feature of of locality is our size, if we aren't a public health authority and we really kind of lack the ability to interface and and communicate along the lines and and understand what those conditions look like and uh translate that in the form of how we how we respond.
I I have a few questions along testing, also jumping off of member Perez's comments. First of all, Joel, maybe you can speak to this better than I can, but my understanding is there's twenty-five billion dollars in the CARES Act for um ensuring the testing was expanded from the federal level, and that mostly, uh I think, looks like reimbursing, uh making reimbursement so there's no cost sharing that's required. There's no copays or anything, uh for folks who do have insurance at least, when they go and get a test. Is that the case?
Yeah, and I think, you know, even if those allocations get consumed uh or have been, um you know, I'm I'm sure there are other um uh stimulus actions that are taken place to uh support continuing costs as the numbers continue to prevail. And we would be in a position, of course, addressing unmet needs. But as you said, there there are resources out there that are covering some of those costs. And we want to actually fill in the gap where we can.
Sure, yeah, and I I say this is a friendly addition to uh to member Perez's uh comments. I guess my my concern would just be that, you know, especially if we were doing this for employees who could, you know, we're just gonna shell out the money for employees who could otherwise uh would be eligible to get it through insurance, through the part of the CARES Act that earmarked for that versus our portion that we have more flexibility with. I would just like um would like to to make sure that we're we're taking advantage of those other resources. Especially, and then just to to his other point about the scale, you know, if we're if we're gonna reimburse, you know, on a per test basis and it was said, I don't know if this was per resident or, you know, if you've got multiple tests per resident, it's a thousand dollars, and we have two hundred thousand dollars, you drain through that pretty quickly uh on nursing home tests that have already been done. When right now, as uh everyone on this call is painfully aware, we're having some of our highest new case counts. Uh so to to member Perez's point, I guess definitely want to make sure we're using that money effectively um and and not using all of that for people who could, you know, get a test through other means. And then also looking towards the future, allocating additional money to testing, maybe from that uh, you know, from the Harris County and Port Ben county portions. But it's gonna be an ongoing thing through December, of course.
Clay, do you think you and Joel are getting uh the input you need on the second uh discussion?
We've heard from a couple, so if there's uh some additional points, uh you know, from others, we appreciate that.
Yeah, on the the social services allocation, um I mean, I I'd be in favor if there's more more need there for the mental health. Uh that just that just seems low. Um the longer this goes on, the longer mental health issues, I think, are are coming to light. And I'm not calling out my wife or anybody, but it's, this is all getting old for everybody. And um I I think we already have some more longer term impacts, and I don't want the the mental health. It just, it looks like it's it's severely underfunded, and if there's not a need there, that's great. But if we could just touch base with those uh those resources in the community and make sure that they're they're well funded.
So uh we actually have some other funding sources that we are looking to support on the mental health uh concerns that these dollars uh don't address. Uh we've got a stimulus uh package from the um CARES Act that is being delivered through HUD that we will uh identify an additional amount, uh and and I believe it's fifty thousand dollars. Uh so uh that's one funding source. And we've also, the council's actually just uh allocated uh another twenty thousand dollars for the total medicine capability. So I think once those additional sources come in and including the uh um funds we haven't seen from Harris or Port Ben, we can start to build that piece up a little bit more. Um you know, that's one that we we don't have a a lot of uh information about community conditions on. But again, you know, we've got some other resources we can prepare and allocate that'll that'll help that one along a little bit more.
Just wanted to put it in the process here, uh before we move into to the action items.
Yeah, so.
I I had something.
Okay.
Mr. Hart, can can we go back to your presentation slide on the breakdowns on expenditures?
Yeah, okay. Uh. Yeah, that one's good. So uh out of the three hundred thousand for buildings and grounds, wh- what is the breakdown of that three hundred thousand?
Well, we haven't gotten to that place yet. Uh uh number more, we um are looking to, again, you know, put some facility improvements in place that uh uh you know, take away some of the fixtures, features that we normally touch on uh high level on a day to day basis, as well as the public, and we want to replace those with uh items that don't require uh someone to handle those in order for it to function. So uh again, our faucets, uh doorways, um uh uh commodes and things like that. And there are a number of others that we've got some mindset about. Um I I know uh public works is a majority, primarily leave that discussion, but those are the kinds of things that we uh initially come up with. And this would be citywide for all facilities, including our parks and uh um uh public safety, municipal courts.
Okay, and then on the economic development, we we have to come up with a plan on how to, how we're gonna distribute those money for the economic development?
The the plan would be to bring in the third parties, some banner expertise that's done that kind of work uh in other places and with the state, and um allow them to, you know, provide us with the process to to get to that point. Uh apparently, there are several communities that are using those kinds of resources, and they're working out well because they have their hand on the dynamics of that work and can guide us properly through, you know, what work in those communities and what happens and kind of stay away from landmines, if you will. Um but but the city will, of course, provide the guardrails and making sure that we don't get in areas that uh aren't unmet needs and PPP and other programs that cover organic income and those expenses. That's the possibility.
And so these numbers, these numbers aren't hard set, this is just kind of what we're predicting um that, you know, how we could break up the the uh sum of money that we have at this point.
We've got some good information in some areas, and others we may be on what we have very little. And um you know, again, we want the expertise and support from the staff to come in and uh uh present to council the 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 changes that need to take place if 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 possible and if necessary. But you know, we'll try to work with what we presented as best we can.
So to interject, the beauty of this is um we we need to get some programs up and running. And then, you know, we don't know how how far this is our, uh I think they're good estimates, but you know, if rental assistance demand or, you know, something else is extraordinary, we'll come back to you post haste and say, this is what we're doing or we're seeing, and uh we need to move from X to Y. So I think the important thing is to get some comfort about the general scale of these things. And that's why this is set up to uh, you know, tonight to uh uh commit to the reimbursement for ourselves. Um but then, you know, we need to get a chance to come back and uh uh get some of these things up and running with these general buckets, if you will, and uh we'll be able to adjust these over the next, you know, six months.
Sure, I I just was, I I just heard there was some uh confusion out there on uh some of this stuff. I just wanted to kind of set it straight.
I had a few more uh questions and comments about this. The first one, and I think this guidance was given a little bit at the last meeting, but uh just to the extent that we can, uh and this also speaks to member uh Moore's point about what are the guardrails and parameters. Uh you know, it would be my desire to target this as much as possible when we're putting, uh when we're, you know, before that next time when we approve these funds. Uh just as an example of that, uh on on the business side, it would be my desire that there's a size, ob- obviously, there's a size component, that this is, in many primarily small businesses, uh both in terms of, you know, revenue and headcount. Um and I would also want to give preference to businesses that have a longer standing history in the community. By that, I just mean length of tenure, not anything more subjective, but places that have been in the community a long time and also, to the extent possible, um you know, when the owner also is a resident of Pearland, I I think that would be something, to the extent that we're not gonna process all these and there's gonna have to be um priority given, I I think that is an appropriate place to put the priority. Um it but then also, you know, broadly in terms of targeting, I I think we do that on the social services side as well. I've seen other communities, you know, just in terms of setting uh setting rules. Montgomery County was an example of, you know, just setting certain income thresholds to making sure it's going to people who really need it and people who, and businesses that were affected because of this uh specific crisis. Uh and so I think that's um, I I think that's appropriate. I guess my question would be, once that is drafted, I guess I want to get an understanding, the next time we vote on this, when, would we see kind of the high level parameters for who would qualify for this business assistance? Uh or would the proposal just be, we're gonna take it to this firm, this firm is gonna set parameters based on other cities, using other cities' success practices? Which I I can understand if, you know, we don't have every single, we don't have the application form necessarily that somebody's gonna fill out, but at least a high level, uh I think I would be much more comfortable. I could see that uh at the next meeting, and just wanna know if that would be possible.
Yeah, I think that's within our capability and interest, and we've had those same discussions um at staff level and uh expressed the very same concerns. But we would be able to establish some kinds of parameters, uh program parameters, whether it's uh social services, rental systems, or with the business community, uh uh recovery, and uh we're in line with those goals.
Awesome, okay, yeah, a couple more things. Um in terms of the the portion of the, let me see on the screen, the preventative maintenance expenditure section for business recovery, uh I would hope that we, I really liked that you guys kind of suggested and was happy to see was in the report, the same way that we're doing for the cities, high touch areas within businesses, uh you know, giving them the opportunity to put in those safety precautions. We've all gotten, you know, we've seen in Houston, and we've unfortunately seen in Pearland as well, you know, where there are outbreaks that start at a restaurant. And so to the extent that we can help out there, I think that's good. I would really want to encourage, though, um and I made this comment last time about the city, longer term fixes here. So the the plexiglass screens, uh the hands-free technology, things like that. I I will, I have less of a desire to see us spend this money on uh to to help people buy, you know, gloves and hand sanitizer that are gonna be business expenses long after uh December thirty-first. So to the extent that they can use it more as an investment, that's gonna be um, you know, recurring, that's gonna pay a recurring dividend to us in terms of minimizing infections, I I think that is uh the most prudent use of the funds, but I was grateful to see that in there. Um, and then I think the last two things, uh, if we could see on the final vote of this, kind of what the communications plan is, especially for the social services and the, the economic revitalization components, um, member Fred made a good point that a lot of people who need this kind of stuff aren't the people who are the most plugged in to what government is doing. And so would kind of like to see what our plan is to make sure that we, uh, we, we get this in front of the people who are, who qualify for it. Um, I think that's going to be a, a big portion of this as well. And then the last thing, just one, one more on the testing sites. Uh, could we, I, I think this is somewhat separate from this, I, I think we could get this before, but could we get a list of testing sites? I know there's been some compiled, you know, here's the Missouri County testing sites. I've gotten some feedback that those might be outdated and I know that there are private sector providers that, you know, have, I, I don't know, for example, on our website anywhere, we say that Walmart is doing this or, you know, this medical clinic is doing it. And I, I've been getting a lot of feedback, uh, online and, and people calling me, you know, saying, where can I get access to a test? So just to the extent that we could get a, something like that pulled together, I, I think that could go, in terms of, uh, ROI on, on something, I, I think that would be a pretty big one if we made, created and then maintained, uh, a more comprehensive list for the city. If you have any feedback on that, Clay.
Uh, we can call up, the map, the interactive map we do have does have test sites that we know of, uh, and, and I know we added the Walmarts when those came online, but I'm not going to sit here and tell you that that's current as of this moment, but it's, it's a constant thing, so.
That's fair, yeah. And what I was sharing with people was the PDF, uh, and so I think that one might be a little more dated.
Right.
Maybe that's a good idea, all start sharing the map with people. Just nice sometimes, especially sharing it with older people that they don't have to go and pinch and squeeze and deal with the map and just have the list available. So that's, uh, kind of feedback there.
Thanks.
Council, any further questions here at this point? The point we've discussed so far is the, uh, uh, allocation of the, uh, care funding for, uh, our virus relief and also economic stimulus. And, uh, I think you've covered an awful lot of those areas. Any further comments from staff that would help us understand that? There's no action item we're picking on this item.
Not, not from our side anymore, this is part of the mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd just like to maybe add, maybe summarize at least what I understood. It sounds like, at least from the members that I heard, that we're, the allocation of this seems to be more, or our desire for the allocations to be more on the preventative side as opposed to the recovery side. Um, so maybe if we're looking at the, uh, the business recovery, uh, portion of that allocation, if we can slide more onto potentially the social services or the public health side. Um, I know there's a lot to develop, but, um, you know, I, I struggle to allocate a whole lot on, personally I struggle to allocate on recovery when we, when not all the damages have been assessed, um, at least, um, I think that's what I've heard, uh, from consensus from the other council members, uh, varying opinions, but more of that theme.
Okay. Any further comment, comment or questions from council, uh, staff? Since the results are making, we have a couple of, uh, action items within, um, ten and eleven, and, uh, I think that, uh, they're, they're addressed some of the issues that we've been talking about. We're trying to figure out what we have, how we're going to use it, and what would be the best results of our donations and allocation of the funding. So I think we've done a pretty good job of that. Unless Clay or, or Joel has a feeling that, uh, there, we need to put the gaps.
So Mayor, if you want to move on to number ten, that, that would be a resolution on, uh, uh, for consideration.
Yeah. So that's, uh, I'm ready for the resolutions if you guys want to move into it. While we try that, confirm more, would you do, would you present item number five? Would you make it to item ten?
Thanks, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution number R two zero two zero dash one one seven. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we're at motion second on the floor. Uh, we're back into staff reports now.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So, uh, this would be a resolution that would formalize the, uh, uh, the community's, city's, uh, impact recovery, uh, specifically from the COVID-19. Uh, this would be seen as a, uh, appendix to the emergency act plan, uh, NXJ, and, uh, we tried to, based on the feedback from last meeting, make this specific to the COVID-19 with the stats and the background. Uh, and as I said, at the outset, uh, this is seen as a planning document. This doesn't, uh, bind you absolutely or anything like that, but it does give us a point of reference that we can use, uh, for our own work and for, uh, pursuing other opportunities, uh, that are out there. So, nothing to answer.
Staff? Yes, we still have an item, uh, the session on that item on, uh, staff report. I don't hear anybody.
I just wanted to say, uh, Mayor, I just wanted to say, I thought it, um, was very much cleaned up from what we saw two weeks ago and was really represented a great plan and, uh, appreciate all the hard work. So thank you. Um, I also wanted to ask Clay, and I think Clay just cleared it up, but just wanted to confirm that, um, those numbers on the bottom, which we saw in the, the discussion, though, you know, voting on this does not lock us into those numbers, that's just, that can be updated, uh, even after this has passed.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Try.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions coming in? Item secretary, I believe we're getting close to them. Motion second, will this ring?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little? The, the motion passes seven to zero to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash one seventeen.
At that record, let's move to item number eleven. We've decided eleven. I approve, perhaps, uh, present this for our consideration.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, consideration possible action resolution number R two thousand twenty dash one one eight, so moved.
We have a motion? Uh, second item somewhere? Second, this is little. All right, we have, uh, circuit, staff report.
So, uh, this item is, uh, trying to, uh, as we're, uh, moving forward, uh, uh, um, allocate and lock in, uh, the things that are, are, that there's consensus on and, and the first priorities. And this would be to reimburse the, ourselves and the city for our direct expenses made to date and also provide some funds for, uh, as this goes on. And then the, uh, uh, at least a, a number for the, uh, 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 field-specific pay. So that's all wrapped up in there as you saw on the slide, uh, and they, again, just trying to, uh, get some clarity and, uh, uh, things that we are, are take as givens. Um, you know, this isn't in the form of a formal budget amendment, but maybe since we're going back on that, we'll be, we'll be able to wrap this up in the actual budget amendment that you have and recognize it there. So this just puts us on record that, uh, the, the first monies that we've gotten in, uh, that we're seeing those going towards, uh, reimbursing ourselves and our city expenses as they described here.
Yes, we have a question and comment based on staff report. Uh, these are sort of, uh, good estimates, I think, pretty good, uh, uh, this is in a position to at least start taking some action that we've been talking about. Any further comment by council? Item secretary?
Council?
On the floor, item number eleven.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero to adopt resolution R two twenty dash one seventeen.
Okay, that information wrapped into our ball and I should have, item twelve, we've hoped, we've moved to future agenda. That's an item nine on our agenda, which is mayor council issues for council consideration and discussion that were done for tonight. Uh, ten is executive session under Texas government code section five five one, page zero eight seven, from the deliberations regarding economic development negotiations. Before we move into executive session, there's, there will be no action on the settlement end, so we will move into executive session. Mayor, do you want to, uh, go ahead and announce what?
Mayor, do you want to go ahead and announce what?
...
9:52 and uh the council will take no action on this item as we go through the process of uh working through our city's activities. Moving into our agenda to item number 11, which is other business, there is none.